For the city of Troy to order, I'm Glenn Clark and I am the chairman. We're about to call the roll, but for the public's better understanding of who's up here at the table conducting business on behalf of the city residents, to my far left, your right is Mr. Lambert, who is a member of the board, and to his, next to him is Vice Chairman Dave Eisenbacher. And this gentleman coming here on the side of the room is Mr. Sanzika, who is a member of this board, but he's also a member of the City Planning Commission, so he's a liaison between those two important bodies. I mentioned myself, I'm Glenn Clark, I am the chairman. And to my right is Mr. Desmond, and then there's Mr. Agias, did I say that correct? Oh, I'm sorry, here's Mr. Neal first, sorry. And then Mr. Agias?
Agallas.
Agallas. He's new, so we're getting used to his name. Okay, and then over here on the side is Mr. Evans, who is a, he works with the city administration here, so he's our liaison between the board and the city administration. And very, at the very end is Mr. Motzny, who is Assistant City Attorney for the city of Troy, and he serves this board as the legal advisor for our proceedings. So at this point in time, we're going to call the roll, and Mr. Evans, could you please do that for us?
Mr. Clark?
I'm here.
Mr. Agallas?
President.
Mr. Desmond?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Who didn't I call, because my list is, okay, Mr. Neal.
Here.
Pardon me, my list is set up for last month, we have one alternate here, so. Okay, so we have a full board.
Very good. So we now, before we move to item number two, which is the approval of the minutes, I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Eisenbacher to read our rules and procedures for the public's better understanding of our business here.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to exam, to explain the justification for the action requested. After petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up, and come up by the, to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, next door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comments will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then be, will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to be pa, to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit.
So we now move on to item number two, which is approval of the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns, comments on those minutes? Someone like to make among, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Chair, just so everybody's aware, these are different than the ones that were in your agenda packet, and that on item 4A for our case on Princeton, it's got the correct yes/no vote people, but that's the only difference.
Very good. So it's the paper to look at for those minutes, not the computer. Is there, would anyone like to make a motion at this time? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of the minutes that were laid on our desk this evening.
Second.
Moved by Lambert, seconded by Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing that we are prepared to vote, Mr. Evans, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agallas?
Approved.
Yes, Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Motion is approved. So we move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there, are there any questions or comments or concerns by a member of the board that, for the agenda that was presented to us in our packet? So we have a set agenda for tonight's proceedings, and we move right on to the hearing of cases. We have item number 4A, which is related to Eric Brake for Michigan Sunrooms, related to the property 5330 Standish. Mr. Evans, could you please present the information you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's printed in the agenda, this is in order to construct in addition to the rear of the house, a 6.5-foot variance to the required 40-foot rear yard setback. I've got some displays on the monitors at the front of the room. This is a aerial view of the neighborhood. This property is located north of Long Lake Road and west of John R. Road, specifically at 5330 Standish. Subject property is located on the east side of Standish. Now, all the property you see in the overhead here, everything's zoned and used for single-family residential. Subject matter involves adding on to the back of the house a sunroom, and I've circled the approximate area where the sunroom is proposed to go. These are some elevations that the applicant has proposed, the sunroom's going to look like. That's if you're standing on the back property line. And that's one side, and there's the other side. And these are, the next two photos are just pictures of what the back of the house looks like right now. What I've done here is I've superimposed a red rectangle on the approximate location of the addition. And this is a survey provided by the applicant, and the street's on the left. As you can see, the sunroom is outlined, or the proposed sunroom is outlined in red. Any additions to the house would need to be set back 40 feet from the back property line, and with this addition, the proposed setback will end up being 33.83 feet. So in order to proceed with what they want to do, they need a variance from this board of 6.17 feet. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any questions for city staff on this matter? Hearing none, what we'll do is ask the petitioner to come forward to the podium. Please identify yourself and your relationship to the property in question.
My name's Eric Baracki, and I'm the contractor.
Baracki, not Brake. Thank you very much for correcting me. Okay. Thank you, welcome. Would you like to share your thoughts about what you're trying to do here, and why you're trying to do it?
Okay. Initially, we, when I first looked at the property, I thought, well, I usually would have like the deck area, elevated deck to work with. My first assumption, and it was a bad assumption, that the setback would be 35 feet. So kind of judging, just using a tape measure and kind of determining the lot line, I thought we were okay on that. When I went back to the office and my lady in the office, Betty, started looking a little closer and started reading the zoning, it's an R1C, which is a 40-foot setback. But when she started looking at the plot plan a little bit closer, she discovered that the house, the lot doesn't meet the R1C to begin with. According to the R1C zoning, to my knowledge, just what we could determine was, the lot would be 10,500 square feet. And then those lots in that subdivision, and that one in particular, is 9,750 square feet. So it didn't meet, so I'm, at some point, I'm assuming that the zoning was changed in that subdivision after it was built, which kind of created a, not a self-imposed hardship. So some of the setbacks, you know, because the, if, if it would have been 10,500 square feet, the lot with the same size house, we probably would have had space, that extra six feet, to put the sunroom on. The whole point is with them, the, of adding the room was, it's off the kitchen area, they have a real small breakfast area, and it was kind of 12 by 14 is not a huge room. And that was like enough space where they could add a table out there and chairs and kind of be an extended dining room. That was the whole premise. Going much shorter than that, and certainly if we went and knocked off the six feet, the room would be so small, it would literally be a, you know, enough room for two or three people. So that's how we came up with the 12 by 14, and sticking to the footprint of the original deck. So I guess my point is, just with, why I'm asking for the variances, just because of the confusion or the changing in zoning, you know, how we ended up with a smaller lot.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this petitioner from the board? While we have you here, I'm going to just ask a question of Mr. Evans over here. So Mr. Evans, can you please address his concern about R1C and the changing of the zoning ordinance, perhaps after the house was built? Can you give testament to that, or any knowledge on that matter?
We looked into it, and that was one of the things he mentioned to me when we talked about it, and he was first told that he couldn't build that way. We're not sure why. Initially, we thought it might be part of some subdivision, open space, part of the ordinance that might have been in place, but we couldn't find any evidence of that. Either way, it was what it was, so. I'm sure if we did a little more research, we might be able to find out, but I wasn't able to find out why.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more question?
Sure.
The homeowner did send out, I think, five or six requests for letters to the immediate neighbors, and I think five or six-
We're going to address that in just a moment.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So if you could have a seat, we will, you know, I was thinking about this while the petitioner was speaking, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. I think it's a better flow after, before the public hearing, that we read any communications on file, because then the public could comment on the petitioner's application, but also neighbors commenting and so forth. So I think that's what we'll do in the, in the, in the future here. So can you please share any communications on this matter with us?
Yes, the, the petitioner provided a document, which is page 17 of our agenda, which was signed by the five adjacent homeowners, showing that they approved of the, the change. And then also, at the last page of our packet for this item, we had an email from 5297 Standish in approval. And I'm not sure if that was duplicate or not. I'm scrolling back up to page 17. And that was not duplicate. So that's a total of six homeowners in favor.
And none opposed?
None that I've seen.
Yes.
None on the table, none in the packet, or email.
Very good. Thank you very much. So now what we're going to do is open the public hearing on this matter. If you'd like to address the board on this matter, please come to the podium and identify yourself in any relationship to the property in question. Seeing that there isn't anyone interested to speak to us on that matter, we are going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration and, or in or further discussion. Any of my colleagues like to speak? Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, just the one comment is, whether or not the property is really the correct dimension for the zoning classification, I would assume the age of the house as such was pretty much built before the whole advent of sunrooms came along, so it's kind of somewhat of a, a unique situation where we're kind of adapting on the fly to deal with something that's relatively new. So from my point of view, the approving the variance request would certainly make sense in light of that new feature of more and more homes nowadays.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I decided just to crunch some numbers, so this is more a numerical viewpoint of things. From Zillow, it said the lot size was 9,600, and you said it was 9,715 ballpark. And I decided to see how much extra space or depth to the backyard would exist if they actually fell into the zoning ordinance requirement. It seemed that they'd have an extra depth of 12 feet, which would more than cover the variance, but that's just a pure number crunching exercise, but something, keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Agallas. Anyone else from the board? Would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Desmond?
Well, I would make a motion that we approved granting the variance based on the fact that the, there is a hardship in the lot that was not caused by the current owner. I guess that's enough. There's no, no resistance from the community, so make a motion that we grant the variance.
Motion for approval, Mr. Sanzika seconds. Is that correct?
Yes.
And any discussion on the motion by members of the board? Excuse me. Seeing none, Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Congratulations, you have your-
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You called it, while the votes were there already. Sorry about that. So congratulations, you have your variance. Enjoy the supermoon outside, it's beautiful. And you're on your way home. Yes, thanks very much. So now we move on to item number 4B, and that is related to Timothy Robb, related to the property in question of 1765 Van Cortland. Mr. Evans, you have some information you'd like to present?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, referring to the monitors at the front of the room, this is a variance for 1765 Van Cortland. In order to keep a shed at its current location, a three-foot variance from the six-foot required setback from both the side and rear property lines. The shed was constructed without first receiving a building permit. This neighborhood is located north of Maple Road and west of Rochester Road. It's on the west side of Van Cortland. Subject property and all surrounding property, everything you see in the overhead is zoned and used for single-family residential. As indicated in the agenda, the subject matter involves a shed that was placed in the backyard. There's some pictures of the shed that the applicant has provided. And the applicant's survey sketch indicates that the shed is located three feet from both the side and rear property line, and the code does require that outbuildings, including sheds, be at least six feet away from both the side and rear property line. So in order to keep that shed there, he needs a three-foot variance from this board. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions of the city administration or staff? Mr. Lambert?
Just one quick question. Did this case come up because a neighbor had complained about the shed?
Yes, we did get a call.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board? Seeing that we, if there's also any questions or comments at this time, we will call the petitioner forward. So please identify yourself and your relationship to the property in question.
My name's Marsha Robb, and I'm the property owner, and-
Welcome.
Hi, and I'm Timothy Robb, I'm her husband.
Welcome.
The one that built the shed.
Sure.
Yeah, and we've actually had a shed there for about 15 years. It's my first home, I didn't realize we had to have a permit. And the neighbor who actually complained about it, her tree got hit by lightning and demolished our first shed, so we put up a new shed in basically the exact same location. We really didn't think there were any complaints about it, and we, we were rather quite shocked when we received the complaints through Paul or, we picked the location of the shed because it's in the corner, it's away from the kids' play area. The problem is, there's a tree that prevents us from being six feet off the property line.
From one of the, from the property line on the west side of the house. The house directly behind us is vacant. The property to the west of us actually was a tear down. There is a new family that lives there now, in a brand-new house. I did have a chance to speak with them. They were okay with, with the shed with where it was. I had several neighbors come up to me, seeing that they got a letter from the city, and they all, you know, didn't have an issue with the shed itself. I did speak with the lady that did file the complaint, not her directly, but to her daughter. And her daughter was actually kind of shocked that her mom, well, she actually said, no, my mom didn't file a complaint, why would she do that? And I just, you know, and I just said, well, you know, we had spoke with the city, and apparently they, they were called out because there was poison ivy on the property behind us, and that grew over, it was vacant, and it grew over into the lady's flowerbeds. So she did call the city out to the property actually that was behind us. And I think what happened was, they noticed that we had a, a brand-new shed, he probably took some measurements, you know, no, it's not to code. No, I did not pull a permit. Again, like I said, I was replacing a shed that had been back there for 15 years prior to the, you know, the tree falling on it and demolishing it. And I do apologize for not pulling that permit.
We do like the location, like I said, because it's away from the kids, it's in the corner of the lot, and, and it provides privacy from, actually, the neighbor that complained. And we did try and talk to the woman. We, we think she was having a bad day because she had poison ivy and she ended up in the hospital. You know, I, we really, she hasn't returned, we left our phone number with the daughter.
Yeah.
She hasn't contacted us. I don't know if she complained, but I, I don't, she hasn't said anything to us about it.
Right.
We do have one of our neighbors here supporting us, and we have had multiple neighbors stop by and just tell us that it's fine, you know, I mean, it's okay with them. But obviously, we're requesting the variance from, from you.
Sure, thank you. So I, we'll open up to the board members here to ask any questions of you that they may have. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
Okay. I don't have a question, I just have the-
Oh, yeah, we'll get to that in just a second. So I do, I, if there aren't any other questions, or Mr. Desmond does, yes.
You said the previously existing shed, is it basically the same size and in the same exact location?
Actually, this shed is two feet larger.
Okay.
But it's, the other shed that I used to have there was actually pushed into the corner, so there was maybe six inches on each side of the shed.
Okay.
This shed, I actually built three feet this way, and it's actually a foot, the roof line is actually a foot from the tree next to it.
Okay.
And then I pushed it forward three feet, so, so I had room to kind of landscape around it. I did buy some materials to bury along the edge of the shed, so no ro, no critters can get underneath it. I haven't done that yet, I do have the material to do that. I, I know, I think she had complained that there might have been critters that are in it, but it is to code as far as the height off the ground. It's on cinder blocks or whatever.
Okay. And it was in that corner for 15 years before it was-
Yes, sir.
-replaced, okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
So the vice chairman's going to address this communication in a minute, but under their communications area. But since you're here at the podium, this Ms. Nelson, Joanne Nelson, is that the lady in question? Did you ever mention?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so she claims by email that you, there were, it looks like a family of skunks that were living under there this summer, so she claims. I used to live on Van Cortland for many, many, many years, and I'm familiar with, both with the park and some untapped parcels, one being large off of Rochester Road, and then of course, adjacent to the park, to the south of the park, there's a lot of areas for these, you know, critters to come and go, unlike other areas of Troy, which are just essentially all subdivision. So you say that you are going to do this work that she's requesting. She essentially is, she says she's not opposed to the, the shed. She says in her email to us that she just essentially wants to know that that netting or fencing or-
Yes.
-whatever would be put down.
Yes.
It seems like she'd be happy, if that's my correct read of this email. So if we made that a condition for the variance-
Yes.
-would you be acceptable to-
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Okay.
It's, it's getting a little cold now, but-
Yeah.
-I would be able to do that in the spring.
Right. Okay. Because I'm familiar with skunks in that area, and so was my, so was my late dog, so.
And, and, and I do have a skunk that lives underneath my back deck, and I've tried, and even though it's fenced off-
Right.
-they've actually dug under it.
Sure.
And I know that the vacant property next to us and next to her, behind us and next to her, there's several rodents that live in, in those areas.
Sure.
So, but I, I will do that to our shed. I will put, I have, I believe it's a two-foot barrier that I will bury in the ground and staple to the bottom of the shed to deter things from crawling into it. I can't deter something that might burrow two feet down, but I can do that, yes, sir.
I think reasonable, you know, efforts are appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, you can have a seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
Okay, so as you just mentioned, we have a email communication on the table from a, from an adjacent neighbor that doesn't specify the address, and then the very last page of our agenda, page 41, is from 1777 Van Cortland, who is also in favor. So both, 1777 is in favor, and the, the other email-
Ms. Nelson.
Ms. Nelson was not in opposition.
Very good. So this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter and ask anyone who'd like to come forward to address the board to please step to the podium, identify yourself and any relationship to the property in question.
Hello?
Hi. My name is Sean Fassbender. I'm Tim's neighbor right across the street at 1760 Van Cortland Drive. We've been living in that neighborhood for about six years. We moved out from Roseville. And I just wanted to voice my approval in, in favor of Tim's variance and there, his also his shed as well, because like, I don't see anything wrong with the idea of, of it being there. I mean, we also have a shed that's kind of in the corner, almost like that. And he's done nothing but be helpful to me and my mom there, the whole time we've been here. He helped us rebuild our mailbox when a different neighbor had backed into it while, like, having too much to drink, and accidentally broke it. He helped me get my first car started up, like, because I had left it idle for a year, like a fool. And then, yeah, like, I have, like, utmost confidence that he'll be able to follow the regulations that you propose, as well as, you know, be responsible about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board during this public hearing on this matter? Now, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for possible action or more dialogue. Mr. Lambert?
Question for our city staff, a two-part question. Number one, had, Mr. Evans, had you talked to the Robbs about the other codes that apply to the shed?
I haven't talked to him, I did talk to the building official, and-
Okay.
You know, having that elevation is sufficient. The only thing the code prescribes to address animals would be a rat wall, and that's where you have to pour concrete foundation.
And the, the second part, and maybe this would be for both of you, is would it be appropriate for, to us to include that as part of the resolution if we were to vote in favor of a variance?
I, I think it would be.
Yeah, it's, you can impose reasonable conditions that are related to the, the property, so that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
Just a little bit more of a question. Could you explain more about rat wall? Does it have to be a continuous concrete, or is the concrete blocks sufficient?
For rat wall, has to be continuous concrete all the way around, 24 inches deep. And that'll go into the ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no other questions-
Are there any other comments or questions, or motions to be made over here? Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
Make a motion to approve based on, in terms of the statement of practical difficulty. A, because of the vegetation, the trees that are present on the property, we don't have to tear out a tree, a nice mature tree for the sake of a shed. B, that's, again, this neighborhood has come up recently in our other decisions where, when it was zoned, a lot of the garages and sheds in this neighborhood were already very close to the edge, as they were, as the previous structure was. C does not apply- C does not apply. D does not apply. And as we saw from the public comment and the emails, it is not harmful to the neighborhood. And I would make it conditional upon two items. Conditional that the vegetation is still present, and that the, the rat wall be maintained to prevent critters from going in underneath.
Just from my better understanding, this is a motion of approval?
Yes.
I heard a lot of reasons that you wanted to do something, but I didn't hear-
Yes.
In that motion. Okay, so that's a motion for approval, and we have a, we need a second if that motion is going to advance.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Si, well, yes, Mr. Evans.
Before I were to second it, I know Mr. Evans may have had a question, so we don't know whether we want to make it the official part of the record until he gets his question answered.
A rat wall involves having a cement truck come in, dig a trench, and trench all the way around the foundation. So if that's what you intended with your motion, he's gonna have to have a cement truck come in, and they're gonna have to basically put a slab, well, a chunk of cement that's four, pour a chunk of cement that's 24 inches deep, all the way around the perimeter, and then set the shed back on it.
I thought the rat wall was required. Is it not required?
Code allows also either a rat wall, or what he prescribed, six inches-
Okay.
Off the ground. Those are the two, and we're aware that the second one doesn't address rodent infestation, but, so if somebody were to look at the building code and say, what helps out with rodents? The rat wall. But it's not always required for smaller structures.
Okay.
So here is-
That's the understanding I didn't have, then. Thank you.
Here is Roberts, from Roberts Rules, speaking. So since, if the motion had been seconded, we would have to dispose of the motion in one way or another. But since it has been seconded, you can now create anything you want. You can amend, you can re, that can go away, we can do whatever you want to do.
Restate the motion.
Okay.
So in terms of the statement of practical difficulty for approval, item A applies because of the vegetation on the property. Items B, C, and D are not an issue. Item E, there's no complaints from any of the neighbors. And three, approving. I would like to approve the variance with the condition that it applies as long as the tree is present, and, or as long as the vegetation is present, since that's the word used in the ordinance for practical difficulty, and that some method of preventing infestation underneath the shed be employed. A second.
Moved and seconded by Eisenbacher and Desmond. And just a question of Mr. Evans or Mr. Motzny. So the, the requirement that Mr. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher placed there, should there potentially be other, just a minor extra word or two saying, you know, as approved by city staff?
We're gonna-
Or is that enough for your enforcement?
We've got enough, we can watch the, we can watch the minutes, and he's essentially offered to do that as well.
Sure, okay.
So I think everyone here has a pretty good idea of what we're trying to get.
Okay.
So we're confident.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared to vote.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzico?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Gallos?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Congratulations, you have your variance.
Thank you. And I, I will provide-
You can't speak from back there. If you'd like to address the board, you have to come to the microphone, so.
Yes, and I will put up that fencing that I talked about and provide pictures to Mr. Evans, that I did do that next spring.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So now we move on to item number five. Are there any communications before us, Mr. Evans?
No communications.
Okay, we move on to item number six, miscellaneous business. Is there anything else that we want to address tonight? Mr. Motzny?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. City Attorney Lori Bloom, every now and then, gives a presentation to the various boards. It caught training, or legal update, or, my question is, would this board be interested in such a presentation? And if so, if there's anything in particular that you'd like our office to address? And that's, that's my question, just for discussion.
Personally, I think that, you know, I've been advocating that for many years, so I think absolutely, from my perspective, and in particular on issues, because I know, I serve on another public board as well, so a lot of members are very unfamiliar with the Open Meetings Act. And indefinitely related to that act, communications between members on matters before the board, not, obviously, you'll want to go out and grab a lunch, or versus, well, let's talk about that matter, you know, without the, the public being able to see those communications. I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any, any other ideas, suggestions? All right, talking to Mr. Evans, we thought that we could do it on a night when it's not, when there's not too many items on the agenda, so.
And I would piggyback on that. If anyone thinks of anything after the leave tonight, just let me know, and we'll forward it to Lori.
Great, excellent. We look forward to that. So item number seven now is public comments. So if any member of the public would like to address this board on any matter, please come to the podium and identify yourself. Seeing that there isn't anyone for the public here to comment, we are adjourned, and we will see everybody in December.